I think we can call to order the meeting. It is 7:30 on the nose. We are nothing if not super timely. Good, so I will call the meeting to order with the gavel. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I think there's an attendance sheet going around still. I think it went around already. Did you already give it back to me even? I have it. No, I have the actual other one too. They do. Thank you. I will start us at 7:30. Okay. We had two meetings in April, and so there were two sets of minutes. Did everyone look at them digitally? Yes, any questions? Oh, Lucille?
Not a question, but a clarification. The minutes for April 23rd. Just noting that Tom Giuffino retired. He did not resign.
He retired, okay.
We're gonna make that change outside of that.
Okay, so with the change, so there's the first one from April 11th, and so we're gonna do one at a time for the record. So I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 11th. Can I get a second?
Second.
The last second. All in favor? Any opposed? So the minutes were approved for April 11th, and then there's the April 23rd, which was a special board meeting. And with the correction that Lucille cited related to the verbiage around Tom's departure being a retirement and not a resignation. So with that change, I can make a motion to approve those minutes. Can I have a second, please? Beth seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the April 23rd meeting minutes have been approved as well. Thank you, everybody. We will now move on to our regular business with the WLS report and David.
We just had our meeting a couple of days ago. Mostly it was to review the annual audit that's done for WLS. The audit report was favorable, meaning that the balance sheet was consistent. It was consistent use and appropriate use of assets. The cash flow was as anticipated, and the audit report was formally approved by the WLS Board of Trustees.
That's it? Excellent. What a good report. Flawless, in fact. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. That brings us to the President's Report. So I'm gonna, unfortunately for you, I'll talk for a few minutes. We have, and first of all, is she here? Yes, okay, good. So just for the record and for everyone to hear, we have a new interim library director that, who will be serving as our interim until we have a permanent director in place. We anticipate that to take between three and four months. Probably sometime towards the end of July. Her name is Jocelyn Bowling Dixon. The board at a special board meeting in April approved her appointment, and she is on the Zoom. Jocelyn, do you want to say hello?
Okay, I'm here.
Okay, we cannot see you, so don't wave. Just say hello if you can, please.
Hello, I'm here.
Okay, so while we have Jocelyn ready to hear this, we are going to propose a resolution for the board's consideration to, as Tom Giuffino had done, serve as the Records Access Officer retroactively to her start date of yesterday, Wednesday, May 1st, 2024. So the resolution is to designate Jocelyn Bowling Dixon as Records Access Officer. And this relates to being able to access emails, text messages, et cetera, for things like boil requests or any other purpose that that would pertain to. So I will make the motion to pass that resolution to designate Jocelyn Bowling Dixon as Records Access Officer retroactively to May 1st, 2024. Any questions? Can I get a second?
Second.
Lucille seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so this resolution passes. Thanks to the board and thanks to Jocelyn. The next resolution is to, this is actually the Library Treasurer's request to have our interim director, Jocelyn Bowling Dixon, serve as an authorized signer for our claims and warrants, claims and warrants, as Tom had done. And she would like a resolution. So I will make a motion to pass a resolution to give Jocelyn Bowling Dixon the authority to sign on both claims and warrants in her capacity as interim director from May 1st, 2024 until the end of her contract. Any questions? Can I get a second?
Second.
Riannon seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Nope, great, so that resolution passes. Thank you, Jocelyn. Thank you, board. Okay. Can, Geraldo, can you just have Jocelyn verify that she heard all that?
I hear, I heard all of what you said, and I thank you.
Thank you, got it. I heard that. Did you all hear that?
Yep.
Okay, good. Great, thank you. The next item is related to the 2024-2025 Library Board Schedule. I believe you should have a copy of that. Are there any questions or issues that you can see? I think in-
Do we need to make, do we need to vote on it today, or can we have a minute to?
We can, you can look at it, feel free, yep. And typically, the only, the times that have come up are the school breaks and having a library board, so that often happens in February. So this year, I think we have steered clear of that. Yeah, and so, yeah, so take a look, and we can make sure, let's just make sure to add that for the agenda for the June meeting to vote on the 2024-2025 Library Board Schedule. Thank you. Any other comments on it while we're here? Nope. Okay. Thanks very much. So now I will shift from the President's Report and share information that Tom would normally share as part of the Director's Report. There are usually two elements of the Director's Report. They are the current operational status and the personnel report. So I'm gonna start, as Tom did, with the current operational status. It relates to our grants, and I'm just gonna read some of these bullets. We have several grants, as you know. I will start with a fire stopping grant, which was one of the first things we tackled as a result of our building audit conducted many years ago. The fire stopping project is substantially completed. There are two payment applications anticipated coming in the next week for work completed to date. A change order will be presented soon for approximately 20 additions to the original scope. They are to be covered by the contingency allowances. I imagine that that was the result of a punch list, and so some issues probably showed up. Final inspection will be done by the city building inspector. The library maintenance department still needs to sign off on all work having been completed after that. I assume we'll have another budget, I mean, sorry, another update in June. Related to, any questions? Fire stopping? No? The HCL General Construction Grant? Oh. Please.
Just on the the fire stopping grant, I know the grant writer does that part, and then once it's handed over, that means that manages that project? Does that maintenance have managed that project once it's?
That's the patch work you said. Yes, the patching work.
Okay. Thank you.
Answer your question? Good, thank you, Jean. I'm gonna move on to the Huguenot Children's Library General Construction Grant. It's substantially completed. There's still one component left to be completed. The outside chalk wall will be painted soon. It had been held up due to weather and temperature, which was up and down, as we all know, and there's one final payment remaining. I will, any questions on that HCL grant? The Main Noise Abatement Grant is essentially complete. I don't know if that is technical construction term, but I'll say it anyway. Some areas were not reachable, even with the lift on site. Unused panels are to be placed in other areas, still to be determined. Who determines that? Will the acoustic acousticians decide? Okay, got it. Excellent, thank you. Any questions on that? The next one is the Third Floor Renovation Grant. It is essentially complete per the original grant description. The preliminary budget figures show a significant savings in the construction of the conference and study rooms, as well as the sound attenuation wall above the teen area. There will need to be a conversation as to other areas that can be addressed or other items that can be purchased to, we have extra money. That's always a good thing, but sometimes not a good thing, because when we're making a grant pitch, we want to make sure that we're using all the money. That's what nonprofits need to do. So this will require an amendment written to the original grant and filed with the state indicating changes to the scope of work and showing what we're using the money for instead as a result of the savings, so that's good news. And I know there are limitations to what that money also can be spent on, unfortunately, so it would be nice if it was a free-for-all, but it's not. I will, any questions? Third floor? Third floor? Nope. ARPA grant, so per the NRPL Foundation President Chris Sellen, the foundation has not yet finalized an agreement with the City of New Rochelle for the funds, which is, but it's in process right now. The foundation and the library will still need to sign an agreement, which allows the foundation to pass the city agreement to the library along with the funds. This is typical protocol, because we can't accept the funds directly. But the foundation, as you know, always helps us to be able to access those funds. And not just through governance and procedural protocols, but also through providing the matching funds that are usually required in order to access those funds. So that current grant is just kind of on hold until those agreements are completed. Concurrent with that, and necessary to proceed with the project once the agreements are completed, is the tank removal separate. That's gonna be a separate project. But those are the solar panel tanks that were buried under the children's pavilion in the 70s. They, we, they think that, I don't know what the assessment, if there was an assessment done, but there will be an assessment done to make sure that they're not contaminated and that they won't harm the earth underneath. And so that process will happen, and that money to pay for it is just coming directly from the library foundation. And that will happen. That won't start until the agreement is complete, and we know we'll move forward with that ARPA grant project. So that's it for the facilities. Questions? Okay, last but not least, actually, it's not last, I'm sorry, penultimately speaking. I'll talk, I'll talk about the personnel report. The first item is to state for the record that Tom Giuffino retired as of April 15th, 2024. His final salary was $168,792 a year. So we're gonna make a motion now. I will make a motion to accept his retirement. Can I get a second?
Second.
Lucille seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So Tom's retirement has been approved. The second item is regarding the resignation of Assistant Director Elizabeth Joseph from her role as Assistant Director as of April 30th, 2024. Her final salary was $112,750 per year. I'll make a motion to approve her resignation. Can I get a second? Cory seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. So both Tom and Elizabeth, we wish them well and thank them for their service. And last, okay, this really is last but not least here, as far as the Director's Report goes. This was, this was, it's very exciting. This is not all 23 pages, but before, so I'm just gonna read this. This is from the archivist David Rose, who works here in the library. It says, "Before Tom left, he transferred several boxes of library documents to the archive for the NRPL records, a collection I had organized in 2021," I being David. "Now with these additional records added to the collection, I believe it is complete, and the attached finding guide describes the collection in some detail. In my opinion, this is an extraordinary collection that documents the entire history of the New Rochelle Public Library from 1893 to 2020, and is a key asset of our archival and local history collections. Anyone who might take on the project of writing a history of our library will need the contents of this essential collection." You needn't read every word of the attached finding guide, but I wanted you to know it is, it exists and is available for use, so we wanted to share that with the public. It is 23 pages, and it has really, it has information on all of the trustees. It has information on many of the programs, the locations. There was like a Tall Trees program, which was like, I think, a children's reading program, and a lot of other really cool and touching and interesting elements. So that is a treasure for all of us here in New Rochelle, and so it's yours, it's ours, and enjoy it. And I hope you get a chance to. Okay. That concludes the Director's Report. Thank you very much, everybody, and now we can move on to committee reports, starting with the Budget Committee.
We presented the budget earlier today, before this meeting. Presented by myself and approved, presented by myself along with the Budget Committee and approved by the board. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Cory. Any questions? Nope. Buildings and grounds, we don't have anything to report, but we will be meeting soon to talk about the ARPA grant and some facilities needs that we are hoping can be, some of them are more urgent than others, but mostly it's making sure our HVAC system is up and running through the summer. And so that is something we will probably not be able to wait until the dead of summer, when we're hoping a new director will start. What would like to get that underway, under Jocelyn's oversight, so she is aware of that. We have a lot of information. So Buildings and Grounds Committee, you are on alert that you will be summoned for a meeting pretty soon. And at the June meeting, we'll have more to report on that. Community Relations.
I'm sorry, I'm mumbling through a mask again, but I seem to be getting sick just in time for these meetings every time, so. I will focus on upcoming programming that we want to make sure you're all aware of. I'll start with the Health and Learning Center that continues to provide all kinds of services to support our patrons in their everyday life. One of the very popular programs is the Free Notary Public Services that are offered every third Thursday of the month, so this, that will be May 23rd for this month, from 6:30 to 7:30 on the second floor. We have, the library offers computer classes on Saturdays every week with different, different topics. There's May 4th, 11, 18, and 25, Intro to Social Media, Cyber Security, Create Your Own Flyer, Selling on eBay. So if you need help navigating your computer needs, come on Saturday between 10:00 and 11:30, and you will be helped on the third floor. By the way, everything that I mentioned today, look it up on the website and pre-register to help the staff kind of manage expectations and what to expect in terms of patrons. So there's a job search coach here twice in May, May 6th, on Mondays, May 6th and May 13th. Oh, three times, 6, 13, and 20. From, on May 6th, we'll be here from 5:00 to 6:30, and May 13 and 20 will be 5:00 to 7:30. So if you are searching for a job, you're not really sure where to start, there's an excellent job readiness coach here, Rebecca, who can help you with that. And then there's a new program that will be on Monday 6th, also related to job search. And they'll be immediately following the open hours from 5:00 to 6:30. Change your phone. And that is a Jump Start Your Job Search workshop. So it's for recent grads, career changers, and anybody else looking for a new start. The job coach will be helping you with your hiring issues. There'll be a Women and Money Roundtable on Wednesday the 15th at 1:00. And I'll move on to kind of the programming bucket of health and movement. Chair yoga continues on Wednesdays from 1:00 to 2:00, and Mondays from 12:30 to 1:30. Separate gentle yoga classes, which I don't know what the difference between chair and gentle. But-
There's no chair and gentle?
No chair.
Okay.
Maybe it's mostly homes up. Mondays, May 6th and 13th, and Thursday, May 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:00. I think I mentioned the new Well-Minded Movement classes that are happening on the Thursdays now, between 10:00 and 11:00. And the class, whose name I still don't know how to pronounce, but Piladas, Kigong?
Kigong.
Kigong. Friday, May 31st, from 10:00 to 11:00. Maybe I should go to it, that way I would know. And a really great program is happening the week of, between Monday, May 13th and Friday, May 17th, for five o'clock every day, Pause to Relax. There will be a, if you're stressed, which I'm sure we all are for various reasons, there will be a therapy dog, or multiple therapy dogs from Hudson Valley Palas for a cause. So you can come and you can snuggle dogs and feel better, reduce stress. That I do with my dogs at home, it works. And the American Red Cross is doing another blood drive on Tuesday, May 14th, from 1:00 to 6:00. I will move on to Kids and Arts Programming. I'll try to get through this quickly.
That's okay. That's what we're here for.
Well, it's a good sign that there's so much programming, right? It's expressive arts for kids Thursdays, May 2nd, 16, and 30, from 4:30 to 5:30. The great art program for kids age 4 to 11, and that is over at the Children's Library on North Avenue. We have a Jedi Star Force Academy, of course, on May 4th, May the 4th. It's from 2:00 to 3:00, right here in the theater. Forced kids that are Star Wars fans, they're encouraged to dress as their favorite Star Wars character, and it's for ages 4 to 11. Another kids program is coming on the, it's on the same day, but over at the Children's Library is Rock Your World Kids, which is a, it's a rock concert, a free rock concert for children between 2:30 and 3:00. Don't let the pigeon celebrate Children's Book Week alone. It's Children's Book Week, and there is a program on Saturday, May 11th, in the children's room between 2:00 and 3:00. Saturdays, Family Fun Saturdays. Actually, there's only one, so Saturday. Saturday, May 18th, between 2:30 and 4:00. It's a drop-in program. Kids can play and be creative, and it's also at the Huguenot Children's Library. There's now some programming for tweens. Tween Tuesdays, where tweens are encouraged, kids between 9 and 11 are encouraged to come and play board games, color, do STEM experiments. That is in the, I don't know, is in the community gallery for the children. And the tween book club meets on Tuesday, May 14th, between 4:30 and 5:30. And they are currently reading Front Desk by Kelly Yang. That meeting will take place in the children's room. There will be an Intro to Babysitting for tweens and teens, which I will send my daughter to.
Yeah.
For making some money. Saturday, May 18th, between 10:00 and 1:00, where kids can learn important skills related to babysitting. Very quickly, teen programming, the Teen Advisory Board, the new Teen Advisory Board is meeting this Saturday, May 4th, between 11:00 and 12:00. And there's all, there's a CPR workshop for teens, right preceding that Teen Advisory Board meeting, from 10:00 to 11:00. And the last bucket that I have is concerts and films. This coming Friday, there's a, Ken, the Ken Moore Band is playing at 7:00, right here in theater. Of course, the library is celebrating Cinco de Mayo with a fiesta musical, musical featuring the Copland Health Ensemble. It's on Sunday, May 5th, at 3:00. There's not a location, I'm assuming it's also right here. And for the, there's a Friday Night Concert Series that continues. It's every Friday. It's a Friday, May 17th, between 7:00 and 8:30, happening right here. And for film fans, Saturday, May 11th, the NRPL Film Series continues, and they will be showing The Butler. And last thing, New Rochelle Plays Hollywood, The Last Who Are, will be shown right here in this theater, Sunday, May 19th, at 2:00. And don't forget to register for any and all these events on the website, please. Some have limited access.
And yes, you were correct that the Cinco de Mayo concert here on Sunday at 3:00, it's gonna be-
Is here. So bring your margaritas.
Discreetly do that, don't, no drinking in the theater, actually. No alcohol, but thank you, yes.
Virgin.
Virgin margaritas, but outside. Thank you, thanks for that. That's wonderful. I love hearing about everything that the library does. And I am actually very excited to send my son to Intro to Babysitting, because he just did his first babysitting, and he loves it. So that's exciting. Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Finance Committee? Nothing? Personnel Committee, Lucille?
Yes. Thank you. I actually need to make a motion for approval from the board building on, following up on an executive session conversation that we had last month, at last month's meeting. And so I am making a motion to approve salary adjustments for two of our staff members. Lisa Iskowitz, whose title is Communications and Marketing Coordinator, and Toby, I'm gonna miss-
Sevish.
Sevish, who is Program Coordinator at the library. So do you need me to make the motions separately, or can I make them together? I believe that I can make them together for both.
I think you can make them together.
Okay.
Yes.
So for the salary adjustments for Ms. Iskowitz, it would bring her salary to, bringing her to a Step System salary, bring her to Step 3 salary for Library 2, to $77,123, and that is effective as of April of 2024. For Ms. Sevish, is that correct? Yeah, okay. We would bring her onto a salary scale system as of July 2024, and her salary would increase to $75,291, which is Step 2 based on the scale system. Again, but for Ms. Sevish, that takes place in July.
Jean?
It is April 15th and July 15th. You're welcome. You're welcome. Any questions? So I, I did make a motion.
You did make a motion, and I will only add that, that, um, this is a topic of discussion because both Lisa and Toby are not part of the union increases. And so they are non-union employees. There are four non-union, well, three non-union, four.
As, as.
Three right now, um, currently. And so that's why, why this needs a separate approval process because it's, it's in tandem with, but separate from. Thank you.
I still need a second. Thank you.
Corey, seconds? Good. All in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Great. So, um, thank you to Lisa and Toby for their work here. And thank you, Lucille, for the work you did to get us here, um, to approve their increases. Um, any other personnel matters? No?
Uh, no.
Sorry. That's okay. Policy Committee?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Thank you for that. And Special Projects, Beth, nothing to report. Wonderful. Um, great. So we have now arrived at our public discussion component of the meeting. Thanks, Jessica. Okay, Bruce Salloway? Yep, we, uh, yep, we do, uh, we're going to do a time limit. We do four minutes. Um, so just let me know when you are starting and I will start.
Okay, so I was planning on three, so I'll use a few extra seconds to add my welcome to Ms. Bowling Dixon. Looking forward to your tenure and hoping that we'll get a chance to achieve great things together. So I have two questions. First, what have we learned from the recent controversy over the presentation by Anthony Arnov and Haley Pessin? And second, how can we preserve our library as a welcoming space for wide-ranging debate and discussion? I have confidence that the board acted in good faith when you were inundated with last-minute complaints about this long-planned presentation. I hope you can see now that although you took pains to frame your discuss, your decision as a postponement, not a cancellation, the initial failure to set another date for the talk and the suggestion that it might need to include other viewpoints raised concerns that the talk as originally conceived might never take place. Most concerning about the board's action was the unique level of attention this talk received explicitly because of the speaker's viewpoints on a controversial issue. The Library Bill of Rights states, quote, "Libraries which make meeting rooms available to the public should make such facilities available regardless of the beliefs or affiliations of individuals or groups requesting their use." And the ALA document on controversial programs and speakers says, quote, "It's not appropriate to disinvite a speaker or cancel a program or event when the topic is controversial or if there have been complaints about the speaker, program, or event." While the board took care to meet the letter of these ALA principles by avoiding the term cancellation, and although the program did eventually take place as planned, many community members felt that the board violated the spirit of these principles by subjecting these particular speakers to extra scrutiny and caution. More broadly, I hope we have learned that the future of Israel and Palestine is a subject that needs full public debate. This conversation cannot be endlessly sidelined by specious concerns about antisemitism and safety and wild allegations of terrorist sympathies. Some people just seem determined to keep changing the subject. True antisemitism is a perennial evil that has again reared its terrible head on the margins of the current debate. And antisemitism must be rooted out wherever it appears, on the left or on the right. But we must not accept the definition of antisemitism so broad that it silences all debate on the actions of the Israeli government. We must also distinguish between comfort and safety. Discomfort is an unavoidable part of democratic debate. We must protect everyone's physical safety, but we cannot allow open discussion to be stifled because some people say they feel uncomfortable. And we must clearly distinguish between advocacy of Palestinian rights and support for terrorism. In a library of all places, we must be attentive to the meaning of words and use them responsibly. As you search for a new director, I hope you will seek not only someone with the skills and experience needed to lead a major urban library, but also someone unshakably committed to ALA principles, protecting intellectual freedom, especially on the most difficult and controversial issues. Finally, finally, I hope all of our library leaders will in the future have the strength and courage to firmly resist any and all intimidation or bullying that seeks to limit our community's freedoms. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, Elise Waterston? I'm gonna start your timer when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay.
So hello again. I was here last month. Excuse me. I need to put on my glasses because otherwise I can't see what I wrote. On the eleventh of April, to affirm the values, principles, and policies as written into the U.S. Constitution, the Library Bill of Rights, and the American Library Association with their mandates to ensure the freedom to read, the freedom of speech, the freedom to hear and to listen. In light of recent events, specifically the, the pressure exerted on you by special interest individuals and/or a special interest group to prevent Anthony Arnov and Haley Pessin, editors of the volume Voices of a People's History, to speak at the library. And in light of the search for a new library executive director and the hiring of a new interim director, I return tonight to reiterate that point and to highlight the enormous importance of our public libraries, of the New Rochelle Public Library, to continue to stand firm against threats and assaults that look to ban speakers, to ban books, and to silence voices, especially those voices that speak up against systemic violence, apartheid, war, genocide, and discrimination. As an educator for nearly fifty years, I appreciate the value of creating spaces whereby minds can be opened, where the strange becomes familiar, and where the familiar becomes seen from a new perspective. Knowledge is a necessary, if insufficient, means to transcend hostilities and arrive at justice. Our libraries are a sacred space where knowledge may be acquired. I've just finished reading the novel My Friends by Hisham Matar. He taught me something new, which comes from this passage worth sharing here. There is no word in English for injustice that a state of injustice is to English merely the opposite or absence of justice. Whereas the Arabic thum, which shares its root with thalam, or darkness, is far more profound. Why share this? Because we have much to learn from those who are too often demeaned, marginalized, dehumanized. What do we do about the injustices, about thum or thalam, about the darknesses that loom? First, we need to know the world. And we cannot learn about the world without a most precious public resource, our free, open, community-based, public library. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, that's only names I have on here. If, would you like to add your name? Before you start, I'm gonna just ask that you write your name and address on this piece of paper. Oh, you have it? Okay. Thank you. Howard Horowitz. Thank you.
My name is Howard Horowitz. I'm a forty-year-old, almost resident. I'm sorry, of New Rochelle. I appreciate this last-minute opportunity to speak, following these two wonderful speakers you just heard from. They actually inspired me to say these few words. So I wanna, what I wanna say is that, um, the implications of what they said is somewhat defensive. We're looking for the board to be strong against negative pressure on the board. I'm looking at the background of some of the news reports of your recent hire, uh, Bowling Dixon, to run our library. I commend the board for this hire. Uh, there are some issues in her background, but the experience of these issues is the kind of proactive director I think we need. That it's not just about books and what's in the library, but it's proactive work in the community, uh, work on anti-racism, multicultural work. Making the library a hub of educational and other activities for children and parents. And then I hope that, uh, this experience she had, including a controversial experience with a Palestinian cultural event, will be to the benefit of New Rochelle going forward. Uh, thank you for hiring her and hopefully she'll get to hear from us as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep. Oh. Nancy Weinberger?
Hi.
I'm gonna, just let me set the clock, please.
Hi, thank you. Okay. This is just impromptu. I didn't really come with prepared remarks, but, um, given what, um, some of the other people, given the situation, I just wanted to add, um, what I thought about how the event was handled. And I think that, um, you, the library trustees did a good job in trying to evaluate how people felt before the event. The event went off, I thought, pretty well, personally. I thought the editors particularly, uh, Arnov was very, he came to talk about his book and it was, and I thought it went well, and it was well-attended. But there was legitimate concern in the community about the event. And it was worthwhile for the board to do what they did, to postpone the event and to think about what the implications would be to the community. And that's important to keep, you know, it's important. I think there's a fine line between being relevant and, um, being, creating a, an atmosphere that is divisive. And so I just wanted to say thank you for, for trying to handle the situation in the best way possible as it came up. Um, and to make sure everyone felt comfortable with what, uh, transpired. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name, my name is Noel Elia.
This is, sorry, let me just, uh, Noel Elia, please. Thank you. And let me start my timer.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
My comment is this. I think it's very, very important and critical to focus on the point that I think Bruce brought up. Um, and Elise might have brought it up. They all might have brought it up. The idea that discomfort is a part of being a critical thinker. It's a part of being a full-blown adult, and it's a part of being able to have disagreements and remain clear in respecting one another. I don't think it's a good idea to, to make decisions based on whether somebody will feel uncomfortable or challenged. As, as long as we're handling these things with mutual respect, it's okay to be challenged. It happens in families. It happens in communities. It's, it's fine. I know it's a very heated subject, the Israeli-Palestinian situation, but it can be handled. I, I think the situations that are going on on the campuses right now could be handled differently. Instead of calling in the police immediately, call in conflict resolution experts, have people talk to each other. We rush too quickly to panicking and thinking that it's going to become violent or dangerous. No. We have to, we have to understand that maybe we need some people to be monitors and, you know, who are professional at that. But we, we can't assume that people can't handle it. Adults can handle this kind of thing. And I, I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? No? All right. Before we adjourn, I just wanna take a moment, um, and speak to my esteemed colleagues, my fellow trustees, and just tell you all, you are all volunteers. I appreciate everything you do. I love working with you. I have one more. I have one and a half months left, more or less. I have two months left. Let's be honest, I have two months. But I'm, I just feel really thankful for you and you're here on your volunteer time. And you put in a lot of heart to this library. And, um, I, as a community member, value you. And so I'm just taking off my, my, my trustee hat for a minute and tell you, I really appreciate you.
So you were the final speaker.
My name's not on here, but, um, it could be. So on that note, I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Tatiana.
Tatiana. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.